Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask everyone to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, reading and approval of the minutes from the meeting held on February 3rd, 2021. I don't know why I said 2021, 2021. Does anybody have a motion to approve said minutes?
Moved.
Do I have a second? On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board, agenda items only.
I received two emails, but neither of them are about the agenda.
Okay, so we'll address them at the end?
Yes, please.
Okay, ordinances, the first reading, 21-0041, ordinance number 270.
Commissioners, I'm going to read the ordinance today. This is a rereading. We introduced this ordinance last month, however, after we had read the first reading, there was a change, particularly the satisfaction claim to satisfy the lien. It was $8. It's actually $10. It's a $10 fee, we were corrected. So we're going to reread it. This will be the first reading again of this ordinance, so there will be no action taken today. However, we will seek to approve it finally at the next meeting and put it into effect. It says ordinance number 270. An ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, ratifying and authorizing charges, expenses, and fees associated with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes by a Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau. The Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna do hereby ordain as follows. Section 1 recitals, the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a division of the Office of the Lackawanna County Commissioners, created pursuant to the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, and is responsible for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes owed to certain taxing districts situated in Lackawanna County. Pursuant to section 7193.5 of the Municipal Claim Tax Lien Act, the Pennsylvania General Assembly has permitted the tax claim bureaus of the several counties to adopt and use the procedures set forth in the Tax Claim Act, in addition to the procedures set forth in the Tax Sale Law. Effective October 1st, 2016, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorized the Tax Claim Bureau to utilize the procedures contained in the Tax Law Act and the Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 244. The Tax Claim Bureau and the City of Scranton are parties to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding, whereby the City of Scranton has appointed the Tax Claim Bureau to collect its delinquent real estate taxes, and the Tax Claim Bureau has agreed to collect the City of Scranton's delinquent real estate taxes and to file tax claim liens for delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the city, pursuant to the provisions of the Tax Law Act through Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 269. Both the Tax Sale Law and the Tax Law Act authorize the addition of charges, expenses, and fees in connection with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes, and Lackawanna County hereby ratifies and authorizes the schedule of charges and expenses and fees herein described. Section 2 charges and expenses, charges, expenses, and fees to be added when applicable during the course of collection to unpaid real estate taxes. Lackawanna County hereby ratifies and/or approves the following fee schedule for the collection of unpaid real estate taxes pursuant to the Municipal Claim Tax Lien Act. Interest rate pursuant to section 7143 of the Tax Claim Act, 9% per annum. Statutory notice of fee shifting pursuant to section 7106 of the Tax Claim Act, 16 cents. Second notice of fee shifting pursuant to 7106 of the Tax Claim Act, $1.50. Perfection and service of the tax lien claim, $8. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for the tax claim is $53, and clerk of judicial records, the filing fee for the satisfaction once the taxes are paid is $10. That is changed from last time. Again, that was eight, and the last ordinance is actually a $10 fee that the clerk's office charges. And effective date, this ordinance shall take effect within 10 days following enactment.
So Dan, now we'll have a second reading at the next meeting?
That is correct. Yeah, this is the first reading, so there's no action needed to be taken today, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
Resolutions, 21-0055, including current payables. Brian?
The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers, 316688-347465 inclusive, totaling $848,082.84. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $7,760,882.48. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Do I have, I'm assuming everybody signed an opportunity to review the current payables. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, next resolution, 21-0039, entering into an agreement with Election Systems and Software.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a three-year election services agreement with Election Systems and Software Incorporated for ballot layout, coding, and voice file services. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak upon that is General Counsel Fredericks.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the Election Bureau, this is a three-year contract with our election machine provider, ESNS. It will cover the general election and the primary elections for 2021, 2022, and 2023. Is what this does, is they print the ballots for us, they come in, they code the machines so that the machines can read the ballots, and it also takes care of the machines that allow disabled people to vote. It also calibrates them for the elections going forward. Again, it's a three-year contract. The good news about it is the price is the same as the last three years. It's $37,500 per election. There has been no increase in price, and this will lock it in for the next three years.
Anyone have any questions for Danny? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0039?
Oh, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm sorry?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dan.
Resolution Number 21-0040, approving the agreement with Westlaw.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the contract renewal for the Court of Common Pleas Court with Westlaw for five years at $16,658.79 per month. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak upon that is the Court Administrator, Frank Castellano.
Hi, Frank.
Morning, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. So I'm here to present the Westlaw contract. As you all know, this is the company that provides the opportunity for legal research for all of our judges, their law clerks, the public defender's office, and the county solicitor's office. Of course, this is a necessary item that we have a continuing contract with Westlaw for. This is a budgeted item every year in the court's budget. The opportunity presents itself today to renew a five-year contract at this time, and the benefit of renewing at this time is that it will be a 1% increase per year over the life of the contract as opposed to a 5% to 7% increase if we did not renew early. So based on all of that and the information that I provided at the previous work session, I respectfully request that this Westlaw contract be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank.
Do I have any questions for Frank?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0042, approving the agreements for the Human Services Development Fund.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the provider agreements for the Department of Human Services for the Human Services Development Fund for fiscal year 2020 and up to 2021 for the following Jewish family services and meals on wheels. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. William Browning.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Bill.
The HSDF Fund, as we've discussed in the past, is our safety net of human services that takes care of primarily the individuals between the ages of 18 and 60. And so with these two services, that covers delivered meals to people that are disabled, that don't necessarily meet the criteria or the age requirements, or the process of meeting those requirements. It's the same thing with the Jewish family services, that they are counseling services that are unobtainable by people with lower incomes that do not necessarily meet the criteria. Said before, they're either they're over 18, under 60, or in the process of getting certification for medical assistance.
Are there any questions for Bill? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0042?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 21-0043, approving the Homeless Assistance Program Agreements.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve agreements for the Department of Human Services and its providers for the Homeless Assistance Program Agreement for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 for the following Catholic McCauley Center, Catholic Social Services, and United Neighborhood Centers. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, again, here is Director Browning.
So these are grants we received from the state, which are actually from the federal government, from housing and urban development, and passed through the state to us. And these three contracts, they are primarily regarding case management, which is services to help people become, you know, leave from homelessness, find a permanent housing, et cetera. One of them is for bridge housing, which is a time-limited program where they pay the rent and then eventually titrate it down, and that people then are able to find housing on their own. And so all three of those are involved in those pursuits in various degrees.
Any questions?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0044, entering into an audit engagement letter.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an engagement letter with Brian Kelly, CPA and Associates, for the Office of Youth and Family Services Audit for the year ended December 31st, 2020, for a fixed cost of $18,800. Adopted at a regular, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Finally, one more time, is our Director of Human Services, William Browning.
This is the county audit. This is the last year of our engagement with this cycle with Kelly and Associates, and we will then be putting it out for RFQ then for subsequent years.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Resolution 21-0046, ratifying an area agency on aging amendment.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Amendment with the Wright Center for Community Health. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of, Jason Cavulich.
Hi, Jason.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to comment, this is again another amendment to the Wright Center contract. This amendment is good, though it's showing progress. This amendment allows us to go through with our onsite vaccines for the older adult high rises in Lackawanna County. So, you know, we are back quite often with this contract, but again, we're moving forward. We were able to do two buildings last week, so I think that's progress. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jason, you're doing a really good job.
Thank you. It's a team effort, that's for sure, Commissioner.
Commissioners, this is the testing program that you guys were doing in December. They're what the, Jason had always planned on moving this into a vaccination-type situation the second the vaccines became available, which he has done, and he's done very well doing so, as you have pointed out.
And now, Jason, our problem is the lack of actual vaccines, correct?
Correct. It's the supply versus the demand, and no one really, even in the highest level in Harrisburg, we can't manufacture it as fast as we need it, and that's really where we're struggling right now.
I hope everyone stays patient and do the best they can under the difficult circumstances. All right, thanks, Jason.
And also, with our Chief of Staff, getting everyone vaccinated in accordance with the regulations is a huge undertaking. I don't think people realize how big of an undertaking it is. So kudos to Brian Jeffers and Jason for working out all the logistics on that. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0046?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0047, approving an area agency on aging professional services agreement. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreement with Family Services Association of NEPA for COVID vaccine response and rent and utility relief program with the 211 to provide Lackawanna County residents with support and assistance. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Once again, Madam Chairwoman, here is Director Cavulich. He will also point out the progress that we're making with the 211 number.
So this contract allows us to go forward with our 211 program, which has to date scheduled about over 1,000 vaccine appointments for individuals in Lackawanna County, which is pretty good, you know, thinking about that we just started advertising the program this weekend. So even before we had a full-blown opening, our soft opening saw over 1,000 appointments scheduled. It is not a perfect system. We're improving it every week. We're adding staff if necessary. We're trying to make it as easy for an individual over the age of 65 to access the vaccine. But there is challenges. There will be drop calls, as Commissioner Notariani noted. People just need to be patient. There will be a hold time because no two phone calls are the same, and these phone calls are handled by caseworkers. They're not handled by call center workers. So individuals are taken care of and made sure all of their needs are met, just not simply given an appointment time and turned over in a matter of minutes like a call center would handle that call. We build flexibility into this contract as well so that if we need to add more capacity to it in order to meet the demands in our county, we can do so easily with 211 and keep the program moving forward. Right now, the bulk of our appointments have been broken down to individuals who want to go to our local pharmacies, which is, it's very telling by how Harrisburg is issuing the vaccines primarily. You know, they really want to concentrate the vaccines in the hands of local pharmacies. And our statistics show that better than half of the calls we've taken have been for local pharmacies.
Commissioner, really quick, this is something we came up with to lead all the calls to the local pharmacies. It was, they were being ordered with all the, and this is relieving them of that. And like you said, the caseworkers are actually talking to the folks that are calling in. The average age calling into the thousand that Jason's talking about for the appointments was 76 and 1/2 years old. So this is what you guys wanted. Jason has come up with this program and partnered with them, and he's doing a great job in trying to alleviate the pressure on these small pharmacies that are getting the vaccines and are trying as hard as they possibly can to get the vaccines in the people's arms.
We are unique in our county. We're always unique in our county because we take this on as a community endeavor, and it's really through community partnerships that we've seen success. So we appreciate the ability to go forward with our teammates and our partners to make what we're doing a reality. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0047?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0048, entering into an engagement letter for the county pension audit. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an engagement letter for the performance of the year ended December 31st, 2020, audit of the county's pension fund to Joseph M. Alou and Associates PC for the fee of $11,000. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, here to speak upon that is our CFO, Mr. Tom Durkin.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Commissioners. This is just the engagement to have Joseph Alou and Associates perform the audit for the county pension plan, which is one of the components of the overall county audit. So we're asking the Commissioner to just go ahead and approve the engagement so that we can get this done and have it ready when the county audit needs it.
Any questions for Tom? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0056? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it was 0048. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Tom.
Resolution 21-0056, approving arts and culture grants. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Phase 2 Lackawanna County Arts and Creative Community COVID-19 Grants Awards in the amount of $96,000, and does hereby approve a program grant addendum in the amount of $7,000 as attached here, too. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, Maureen.
Nice to everybody. So these COVID-2 Phase 2, we called them because of the pandemic, we had to cancel a lot of things, so we wanted to get that money back out in the community and do safe online or real-world activities. So Phase 1, we funded last fall, and these are the ones that can take place in the spring or summer that, again, because some things have changed, we have reallocated funds and actually have a lot of great programs. So I'm looking forward to seeing them.
And Maureen, we did do a grant addendum for the Broadway Theatre League. Was that?
Yeah, as I said in the last meeting, it's been somewhat of a rough year to kind of determine needs. So yeah, that's an updated addendum to the previous approved program grants, which receive yearly allocations.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0056?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Maureen.
Resolution 21-0045, appointments to the Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority. Mark Duer, 1105 Cornell Street, Scranton, PA 18504, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority, Attorney Joseph Price, 75 Glenmore National Boulevard, Music, Pennsylvania, 18507, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Commissioners, I recommended Mr. Duer to be put onto this authority only because he is obviously our Director of Maintenance and Grounds here in the county. And as such, because of the COVID-19 epidemic or pandemic, he has been taking care of the maintenance up at the Authority's Pavilion. He's been doing this with the county and the county workers since Live Nation has basically closed up shop for the year of 2020, and we don't know if they're going to be opening up in 2021. It makes sense for him to be on the board for the same reason that, you know, he is taking care of all the facilities up there along with his crews. It would be wise for us to have someone on the board that knows what's going on with the facility itself. Attorney Price is the treasurer of the Authority and has been on there for multiple years and is being reappointed for another term.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0045?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
I second.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0049, appointment to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Patrick Tobin, Subassessor, 202, Burenac Boulevard, Allforges.
I think it's Booburnak or Buburnak.
Booburnak Boulevard, Allforges. Sorry about that, Mr. Tobin. It's a five-year term to commence immediately and expire on 12/31/2025. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Mr. Tobin is a Subassessor for Lackawanna County. This is also one of the appointments that makes sense for the, in this case, the Board of Directors of the Land Bank, to have someone on there with such experience as being an assessor for Lackawanna County. Madam Commissioner.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0049?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0050, the Lackawanna County Housing Authority.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Housing Authority. Attorney Paul Walker, 204 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503, five-year term to be effective immediately and to expire December 31st, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Mr. Attorney Walker is a previous board member on the Lackawanna County Housing Authority, and he was asked to be put back on by their executive director through a letter to us, which the Commissioners have put him on because of that.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0050?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0051, appointments to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority. Al Chelick, 703 Plank Road, Mayfield, PA, five-year term to expire December 31st, 2020. Robert Calgim, 5 Gardinha Drive, Archwell, PA, five-year term to expire December 31st, 2020. I believe those last, those years are incorrect. It should be saying 2024, and 2024, well, they're just a typo. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County River Basin Authority. Joe Chalins Jr., 406 Baumann Street, Dixon City, PA, a five-year term to expire on December 31st, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman, we will get those typos fixed before these are signed into resolution.
So for the first two, it's a five-year term to expire on December 31st, 2024 or 2025?
They all should be, they all should be 2025.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Madam Commissioner.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0051?
One question. I think we all received an email from an individual that had some interest, and I just wondered if was any consideration taken on his behalf. I didn't know about some of these appointments.
Who was that that we got the email from, Chris?
David Moran. I don't know this person.
Yeah, all right.
I mean, I have no idea.
We'll have to email him.
Chris, these appointments are supposed to be, their terms are supposed to be staggered, though. Even though we're appointing them now, it really can't be for five years. It should be according to the unexpired term that they're filling, even though they hadn't been appointed by the previous administration. So there should be a staggering in there where we can't just make them all end.
The other, the other terms expire in '22, '21, '21, '23, '23.
But in reality, they can't. They should all be, you know, if you're going to have a board, it's got to be staggered so that one expires every year. It's just something we have to check into, you know, going back some time, I think, so that it's actually logical. It makes sense.
I mean, this is something that's happened on every board over decades. I mean, this is something that's happened on every board over decades.
Oh, yeah, but that still doesn't make it right.
I agree.
Tracy and I had this conversation. There was previous research done on the issue. Like Jerry said, the purpose of it is so that not everyone expires at once and then a whole new board is appointed.
Correct.
But like Tracy said, it's going back, you know, years and years and years. Now, with regard, Chris, to Dave Moran, we did not get, I didn't get that email until yesterday. So this resolution is already drawn up.
I didn't get it either, actually.
So.
Well, I mean, I have no problem with any of these individuals that we're appointing. I just wish we could advertise these and give other people at least an opportunity to apply.
I believe we did, I did tell my assistant to reach out to Mr. Moran and see if he was interested in serving on another board and what his interests were. So I do believe that is being done.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to approve this motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
And Tracy, you made a prior mental note that we'll look into that issue about the staggering of the dates.
Absolutely.
Okay, once we get through COVID here. Twenty-one dash zero zero five two, appointments to the Lackawanna County.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, Kenneth Mikovits, 530 South Main Street, Taylor, to begin, his term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024. Paul J. Doherty, 123 Emily Ave, Scranton, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Chairwoman.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five two?
Motion, second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number twenty-one dash zero zero five three, appointment to the Lackawanna County Heritage Valley Authority.
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County, Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, Greg Popple, 215 Cameron Ave, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Mr., is it Popple?
Yes.
He has previously served. He's being renewed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Renewed, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion, second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-one dash zero zero five four, appointments to the Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Brian?
Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Francesca Pantuso, 405 Blue Shudders Road, Roaring Brook Township, term to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2023. Jeremy Ruby, 313 George Avenue, Einem, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023. Both of these are also appointments. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 17th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
And Brian, it's my understanding that the Director Kirk Cremoni requested that both Ms. Pantuso and Mr. Ruby be reappointed?
That is correct, Madam Commissioner.
Okay. I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five four. Do I have a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. Tracy?
All right, our first email is from Dan Cardonik. He is the Executive Director of the Jewish Community Center of Scranton. He says, "To begin, I wish everyone well and good health during these difficult times. After waiting for two months to be notified if our agency would be receiving the recently dispersed nonprofit COVID-19 grants, we did not receive any formal notice from the county. We had submitted our application in full and on time. I followed up with Mary Liz Nato to check on the status and was informed that our agency was not eligible. The response that I received from Mr. Nato was the following, quote, 'I regret to inform you that it was determined that you did not qualify for the nonprofit grant. The grant criteria outlined in the program manual disqualified religious organizations from applying. The grant reviewers felt that your mission statement and some of your educational programs were based on the Jewish faith would have been interpreted by the reviewers as religious. Please feel free to follow our social media pages to keep up to date with any future grant announcements or opportunities,' end quote. After reading this, it became clear to me that perhaps reviewers do not understand what the Jewish Community Center, the JCC, is about and the type of agency we are for the community. We are a nonprofit community center that serves the entire community. We provide crucial services to the community such as daycare, preschool, camp, wellness, aquatics programs, senior programs, and more. Additionally, we distribute meals for the county. Any Jewish-themed program that we run, which is occasional and always community-minded, it always community-wide, it is all-inclusive and attracts all members of the community. We are not a religious organization like a synagogue or a place of worship. Our agency was built on Jewish principles. We are the exact same type of agency as the YMCA. The difference is they were built on Judeo-Christian principles. I understand that the local YMCA was a recipient of this grant. So my question is, why would the JCC not be eligible? The fact that we run Jewish programs that are open to the entire community is no different than if the YMCA were to run a Christian program for the entire community. This email is to kindly request that the county reconsider the JCC for this grant. As a nonprofit, we are facing financial challenges like our fellow agencies, the YMCA. I certainly appreciate your time to review my inquiry and look forward to your response. The JCC has always been and will continue to be a firm partner with the county in order to provide the important services needed for our greater community. Thank you for your assistance."
Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners, I will speak with Director Sacco today about this and see what, and get more details for us.
Yeah, I have to agree with that email. I mean, the JCC is definitely a community center and they do a lot of good for this area. So I'd like a second look at that.
We will take, we will look into that, Commissioner.
Any other emails, Trace?
I received one more from James Behan.
Madam Commissioner, this email goes into litigation and pending charges. I've spoken to the solicitor on that. And while it is, it's a lengthy email and it's definitely something that is currently in the courts, our solicitor and myself don't believe because of the pending litigation that may be coming towards us over this, it can be read into the record at this time.
This same person at one point worked for a authority?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
No.
This has to do with some court action. And in the email, it talks about maybe some pending litigation against some other departments if they do not get it cleared up in that type of situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, essentially, Chief Jeffers is correct. It involves what appears to be a familial issue where the District Attorney's Office is investigating or has an open matter with regards to that issue. And it clearly involves personal issues and nothing to do with county-related matters. So for those reasons, it would be inappropriate to read it publicly into the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tracy?
Thank you. That's it. Those are the two.
Commissioners, other business. Commissioner Schermack, Commissioner Terriani?
Oh, I can go. I'll just give a quick update on our Suicide Prevention Alliance. So we had our monthly meeting last week. We had a guest speaker, Goban Martin. He's a retired state trooper expert in the suicide realm. And he did a great presentation. We've divided our, well, first of all, we had about forty-four, forty-five participants, some in Zoom, some in person. We've created about eight so far focus groups, improving the hospital emergency room experience, schools and youth, supporting the needs of first responders, health and physical health and behavioral health integration. We have the veterans. What else? We have individuals with substance disorder and maternal mental health. So there's some good groups, some great folks helping on this. And it's really moving forward and it's much needed right now during this pandemic. So we're continuing on and it's going terrific.
Good work.
Good job. Jerry?
No.
Okay, so I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion, second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.